We might as well get started.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. It is Monday, February 14th at 5:31 PM. Calling to order the special community development block grant meeting for the Borough of Beach Haven.
Pursuant to the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act, adequate and electronic notice of this meeting has been provided by posting on the bulletin board in the Beach Haven Municipal Building, on the Borough website, and mailing the same to the Beach Haven Times, the Asbury Park Press, and the Press of Atlantic City. Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Ball Miller?
Here.
Dr. Davis? Mrs. Rutherford?
Yeah.
Mayor Lambert?
Here.
Okay, at the last meeting, last month, we heard some suggestions for use of our community development block grant funds. Again, this is a county administered program distributing federal funds. And we participate in this grant program on an every other year basis. And at the last meeting, we talked about continuing to modify non-ADA compliant curb cuts and street corners in the downtown area. We looked at the possibility of purchasing additional inclusive playground equipment, purchasing additional beach wheelchairs, and possibly purchasing an additional gator to transport the disabled to the beaches. I did meet with Frank Little and Chris Carson, and we weighed the options. And we believe that the continuing to modify the ADA compliant curb cuts downtown to continue the walkability of town is our best option. And just so you know, the 2020 funds that we used for CDBG, we used at the southwest corner of 12th and Bay, the northeast corner of 12th and Bay, the northeast corner of 11th and Bay. We did the northeast corner of 8th Street, the southeast corner of Center and Bay. We also did handicap curb cut and accessible ramp at the post office. And we also installed a portion of sidewalk on Taylor Avenue between Delaware and Siegel. That's where the funds went. And that project exceeded the grant amount, and we put in the difference. I was not able to get a list from Chris of what is projected, but Frank was explaining to me that there are quite a few that look like they're in compliance but are outdated and are not the proper slope and need to be adjusted to be ADA compliant currently. That's what we're recommending for this year's project.
Okay. Anybody in the council want to comment?
I just want to say I'm on here, and I just can't see anybody. I don't know what I did. But anyway, I'm for it. I think it's fine.
Thank you, Nancy.
Yeah, I think that's, sorry, but it's a good option to use those funds for that, to continue to make sure that it's accessible for everybody.
Thank you.
I know that, you know, a lot of things were thrown out, and unfortunately, some of them are just not allowable by law. So I would certainly go with the recommendations of our engineer and public works and manager. Thank you.
Okay, so we will have a resolution on the agenda at the 6 o'clock council meeting. But as far as the community development block grant project, we are required to open the floor for public comment before we move on.
Okay, so we will open the floor to public comment. Please limit it to three minutes. Don't forget to give your name, address, and just make yourself known to Sheri, however you can.
And these comments are specific to the community development block grant project. I don't see any hands raised.
Okay, seeing none, then we will close the floor to public comment. Any final remarks by council?
No.
No.
I'll see you at 6:00.
Yeah, real soon. So, okay, seeing none. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I'm adjourned.
Second?
Second.
All right, thank you very much. So we're just going to, I'll leave this up and running. I'm just going to turn off the cameras and mics, and we'll be back at 6 o'clock for a regular agenda meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Colleen, you're good to go.
Okay. Oh, good evening again. It's still Monday, February 14th. It is now 6:00 PM. And it is a regular meeting of the Borough of Beach Haven, and please rise to the flag salute, which will be led by Dr. Davis.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Pursuant to the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act, adequate and electronic notice of this meeting has been provided by posting on the bulletin board in the Beach Haven Municipal Building and on the Borough website, and mailing the same to the Beach Haven Times, the Asbury Park Press, and the Press of Atlantic City. Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Ball Miller?
Here.
Dr. Davis?
Here.
Mrs. Rutherford?
Here.
Mayor Lambert?
Here.
Before I dive into the numbers from the treasurer's report, there were two items that will be on the agenda tonight that I thought were pertinent to point out. The first is that we are entering into a shared agreement with the Borough of Tuckerton to share a zoning officer. As you know, Joanne Tallin, our zoning officer that we were sharing with Long Beach, has retired, and we were on a search for replacement. Very happy to welcome Phil Reed to the team. He has many years of experience and is the construction official and zoning officer at the Borough of Tuckerton. And he already actually has started coming and putting hours in with us to get caught up. And I'm very happy to welcome him, and I hope that you can stop by and say hello to him. Also, you'll see on the agenda tonight that we are finally, after several years, ready to go out to bid for the stormwater pump station project. So this is the largest flood mitigation project that the Borough has undertaken, and I'm excited to move forward with that. Cash receipts in the current fund account for the period of January 1 to January 31, 2022 was $2,240,123.84. Cash dispersments in the current fund account for the month of January totaled $635,814.13. Cash balance in the current fund account as of this period totaled $16,687,378.8. Cash receipts in the water utility account for the period of January 1 to January 31, 2022 were $9,492.18. Cash dispersments in the water utility account for the month of January were $27,166.90. And the cash balance in the water utility account as of January 31st, 2022 was $3,924,147.1.
Okay, thank you.
Ordinances 2022-3C and ordinance amending and supplementing Chapter 145, Pickleball Courts Municipal, the Borough Code of the Borough of Beach Haven, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, to remove the requirement for an online registration system and provide the attendant with more authority. Final reading.
Okay. It is final reading, so we will open it for public comment unless the, anybody on the council would like to speak first or last, or whatever you want to do here. Nope. Okay, then we'll open it to public comment. Please raise your hand, limited to three minutes, and just make yourself known. Don't forget to ID yourself, too.
Seeing none.
Okay, seeing none, we'll close it to public comment. I only would like to say that I would like to make sure that this year, our attendant is the person who is responsible for moving people on and off the courts, and I would like to see some kind of use, recreation, and round robin. Those are my only comments. Thank you.
I need a motion.
Okay, I'm sorry. Is there a motion approved 2022-03C?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Ball Miller?
I voted no on the first reading of this, and I'm going to stick with that. I think that there needs to be a schedule and organization and a time for open play, so my answer is still no.
Dr. Davis? Yes. Mrs. Rutherford?
Yes.
Mayor Lambert?
I remain a no as well.
Okay. Ordinance 2022-01C, an ordinance establishing Chapter 137, outdoor dining in the Borough Code of the Borough of Beach Haven, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, to establish an outdoor dining permit under certain circumstances. This ordinance was introduced January 27th and was scheduled for publication on February 3rd. We were not able to have it published until February 10th, which makes final adoption impossible for today. It's not giving us enough time. So I will not be able to present it tonight for final adoption. I don't know how you'd like to handle it, Colleen, if you would like to take questions from the public or hear public comment. But we cannot hold a public hearing and consider final adoption until the 24th of February.
Okay, well, I'm sure there's a public comment on this one.
Can we, Colleen, I'm sorry to interrupt you. Can we just, I just want to just clarify some things with this ordinance that I think that there still is some confusion. We do have, and Sheri, please correct me if I'm wrong. We do have current outside dining at many different locations in town that are permanent. They are permanent outdoor. They have a already established seating occupancy. Went to the land use board if they needed an extension of seating. This ordinance does not have anything to do with them. This ordinance is designed for a temporary outdoor seating for restaurants or takeout facilities or whatnot that want to continue to have outdoor seating on their property or the sidewalk, which has to be six feet. If they encroach on the Borough right away, it still has to be six feet, and then could only be four top tables. And this would be a yearly application that they would have to do and apply for on a yearly basis. So this does not affect any establishments that have already have outdoor seating. This is for temporary yearly seating. If an establishment would like to continue to be permanent, then they would follow the procedure to go to the land use board and ask for an extension to their already established occupancy.
Thank you. And one thing I would add to that is because I did have somebody today call and question me. This ordinance written out is on our website. You just have to go on and look for the ordinances and go down and click on it, and you will be able to read the entire version that is being presented. So you don't have to wait, or if you have any questions, because some people do, and I guess they don't realize that this is being posted on there. Um.
Want to move on?
Yeah, we'll save it for public comment because I'm sure there will be some, but we have a few other things to get through. So is there a motion to approve?
You don't have to do anything with this. Yeah, we're just going to move on, and then we'll have it on the agenda again on the 24th.
Okay.
And the same situation applies to 2022-02C, which is amending Chapter 180 for swimming pools. This was introduced January 27th. It is available on the website for review, and we will bring it up for a public hearing and final adoption consideration on the 24th.
Okay.
All right, 2022-04 is a calendar year. 2022 ordinance to exceed the municipal budget appropriation limits and to establish a cap bank pursuant to NJSA 40A:4-4514, first reading.
Okay, since first reading, no public comment, but anybody in the council might like to make one? This is all pretty pro forma, right? Yeah.
Thank you.
Nothing? Okay, that being the case, is there a motion to approve 2022-04?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Ball Miller?
Yes.
Dr. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Rutherford?
Yes.
Mayor Lambert?
Yes.
Ordinance 2022-05C and ordinance amending Chapter 2-2E, 2E of the Borough Code of the Borough of Beach Haven. It's establishing the timing and criteria for performance evaluations for the Borough manager. First reading.
Okay, basically what we did is we, it was two per year. We went to one per year. Any other comments on this particular ordinance from the council? No?
Nope.
No.
A motion to approve 2022-05C?
So moved.
Moved.
Is there a second?
Chris, I got you. I was a second. Thank you. Mr. Allen? Dan?
Yes.
Thank you. Mrs. Ball Miller?
Yes.
Dr. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Rutherford?
Yes.
Mayor Lambert?
Yes.
All matters listed under item consent agenda are considered to be routine by the municipal council in one motion. All consent agenda items will be reflected in full in the minutes. Any items requiring expenditure supported by a certification of funds. Resolution 49, returning piling bonds. Resolution 50, returning dumpster bonds. Resolution 51, refunding performance bond and remaining escrow. Resolution 62, authorizing refund of redemption monies to outside lien holders. 63, authorizing to advertise rebids for the 2020 stormwater pump station on 7th, 12th, and Pearl Streets and drainage improvement project. 64, establishing fees for dumpster maintenance. 65, executing a shared service agreement with Ocean County for the reconstruction, resurfacing of portions of Pelham Avenue. 66, executing a shared service agreement with Tuckerton Borough for the provision of zoning services. 67, amending the personnel manual. 68, authorizing the mayor and council to apply for the community development block grant funds. 69, authorizing an executive session to discuss items pertaining to personnel and municipal real property. 70, authorizing execution of a shared service agreement with Long Beach Township for the 2022 municipal transportation system. And 72, approving a contract between Beach Haven Borough and the Community Arts Program for the use of the park for the 2022 season.
Okay. Everybody have a chance to review these? Is there anything you'd like to see removed or discussed?
No.
Nope. All right. Okay, that being the case, is there a motion to approve the resolutions?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Ball Miller?
Yes.
Dr. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Rutherford?
Yes.
Mayor Lambert?
Yes.
I have a bill list this evening in the amount of $3,408,964.26.
Okay, everybody have a chance to review the bills? There were a bigger number than usual as certain things came due. Anybody have any questions, concerns? No? Okay. So being that, is there a motion to approve the bills?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Ball Miller?
Yes.
Dr. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Rutherford?
Yes.
Mayor Lambert?
Yes.
That's all I have.
Okay, well, we've come to public comment, and as always, please limit yourself to three minutes. Please make sure you give your name and address, and, you know, make yourself known to Sheri. Raise your hand or somehow get her attention.
Seeing none.
Oh, seeing none. We'll close the floor to public comment. And now we have our executive session scheduled. There will not be any further business after the executive session, correct?
Right. We, I anticipate to be in the executive session about 45 minutes. No formal action will be taken, and we will come back into the public session for final comment and adjournment.
Okay. Is there a motion?
I don't even think you need to do that.
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
Do we need to check out, disconnect from this meeting?
No, I'm gonna, I'm gonna move you in. Just give me just a second.
Okay.
Thank you.
I think you're at final remarks by council.
Okay, I couldn't see anything from there. All right. Final remarks by council. Dan, why don't we kick off with you tonight?
Okay, I thought it was nice to have a little touch of spring over the weekend, but unfortunately that's gone. Also, pretty happy that, you know, it seems like we may be approaching a return, return to normal. Our governor lifted the mask mandate for, you know, indoor spaces, including the kids in school. And I'm really looking forward to sending my two little ones off to school without a mask on them anymore. I know they're looking forward to that, too. And hopefully things can continue on the right trend, that we can get rid of the rest of these restrictions and stop hearing about COVID on a daily basis. So that's my hope for the upcoming summer, one of many, actually.
Thank you. Jamie?
Um, I'll just echo what Dan has said. I'm also looking forward to some type of this new normalcy, I guess. Other than that, I'm looking forward to the turkey dinner on Saturday. Thanksgiving is my favorite holiday, so this is like a special, special treat and anything to do with food, I'm in, I'm all in. So hopefully I will see everyone there. And hopefully next year, it could be in person again. I know that my daughter always works that and she loves doing that. And that's always a good time when everybody gets together. So hopefully next year we can sit down and have a turkey dinner together. But everyone, take out, support them. That's it.
Our three members, our three people that are still here. Nancy?
All right. Happy Valentine's Day. I don't have a lot to say. I just got back from Florida. The weather was nice and I've lost my cell phone, so don't try to call me. I mean, it just disappeared. My son's driving over. We, we drove through the seven bridges today and it's the only place I got out of the car. And that's the only place I can think my cell phone could be, but it doesn't show up. So if anybody knows how to find a cell phone, let me know. Anyway, I'm looking forward to the turkey dinner as well. So please support the fire company, buy a few extra tickets so you can have people over for dinner to eat turkey. That's all I have to say.
Thanks, Chris.
Yeah, so I just want to also wish everyone a happy Valentine's Day and kind of in coinciding with that, it was a really great, if anyone is part of the BCA even schools Facebook page, they had a great clip today on the shelves that the first graders did about being kind. So it was really sweet to see. Some publicity be there. What? Yeah, yeah, on the news. Yeah. 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 So if you see some of those, pick those up and hey, why don't you send an email back to them, thanking them for being kind. And that just spreads a little kindness a little bit more. So thanks for everyone who attended the meeting earlier on. Sounds like we'll have some public comment at the next meeting. So we'll go from there. So thank you.
Okay, thanks. That just leaves me. And as you all said, happy Valentine's Day and fire dinner, my two things, noon till late, takeout, please go out and support them. And that's all I have. So on that, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second. Thank you.
Good night.
Good night.